Well, that's. Yeah, with the best.
We open the February 5th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight? I have one. I received a request from the Trust for Public Land. We're asking the town for a letter support for a grant for the cleanup on the Habitat for Humanities property. And I will bring that up later. Explain that in Select Board Review and Action.
So the only other thing I had was the propriety list, priority list application as part of the wastewater discussion.
Okay, the Clean Water Revolving Fund.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna add it to your presentations.
That'd be great, thanks.
Don't let me forget.
Okay, don't let me forget.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve Select Board Minutes of January 15th, 20th, and 27th.
I'll make the motion. Few minutes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's open for discussion. January 15th. Do we see any corrections, solutions? Comments on those?
But I don't think it'd make a difference. Motion was made by Cardy. And in his motion, he didn't say tested. Said it afterwards, after the vote. So you wanna redo it, I don't care, but it doesn't really matter. That was on the wastewater.
And it said what? This is on January 15th. This is on.
Oh, okay, that's not the one. It's a normal.
So regular Select Board, January 15th. Then we had the January 20th Select Board, Special Select Board meeting for the budget. Have any additions, corrections, solutions on that? Here we go, and we'll move on to the January 27th Special Select Board meeting to go over the draft ordinance and wastewater bylaws. And your comment was?
He made the motion. And we voted on it, then afterwards, he included testing. On section three. For the users. So I didn't know if you wanted to redo that, but no.
Yeah, Kurt, do you, do you recall what the?
All I remember was that little eyes.
Yeah.
It was on two and three.
It was just on three.
Or three, we voted it, and then afterwards, it said intestine.
And what does that mean?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I made the motion to keep it in.
Right.
I didn't get a second.
Right.
So then it failed.
Right.
Okay.
But then two was taken out.
No, we never discussed two.
It was, it was three.
There was something about some motions there that we were going to do something after the vote, then our aim might, might test it. So I don't know.
The only thing we did was my fault was for the definition of failed septic system to be aligned with state regulations, which is updated. And the other change was we had a discussion on the opt-out provisions. And the four, the majority of the board ruled to take out dot, 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 every region. But we never discussed two.
We never discussed two. It was only about three, and it was three, the little three was a requirement for people outside of the front lane to have to get their systems tested in order to opt out of the system. And in order, they had to have a replacement field available to them, so in order to opt out of hooking up to our system, you would have had to have an engineer come out and design a replacement each of those. And it was my feeling that that was too restrictive. And then he was referencing that message there because anybody that didn't hook up now and chose to pay the fees later would just affect our system as a whole. Use the wrong replacement. Not sure what I meant by testing.
If you said something about tested, that's why I was questioning it. Whether it was after the vote. That's why I was just saying, do you want it to be voted or just over it?
My intention was to have to look through the moves by election, but that's what happened, I'm not. But it sounds like what was wrong. If that's, if that's the will of the rest of the board, it's not fine.
Right, of course, you got, but we're discussing, I don't know.
No, no, it isn't, because all, all we have to do is vote on the minutes that really were what happened. Whether they're true, they have to be what happened during the meeting, whether we agree or not, or we just stay. That's all this is right now. Seeing as we don't know what tested means, and we definitely did not discuss taking out note two.
Hey, listen to this for about, I mean, I feel this one, I'd be going with my words, I feel very confident that I have it, but we can go back, listen to it again.
I don't really remember. Totally remember. All right, so all those sort of approving the minutes of January 15th, 20th, and 27th is written, say I post. Okay. Comments on the community? Anyone on line have comments? Could I have comments if you want?
So I was on Zoom during the special meeting last week. It's hard to put time for your answer to hear this full discussion and the language and that was voted on, on number three, three, dot, dot, dot. But so we have, we have Peter Lozarchek from Sun and Ronald online, who's gonna talk about the 30% decline. But I reached out to Peter earlier today to understand the consequences of that vote that you're discussing right now. And the, by loosening that that opt-out criteria, our opt-out potential amount of landowners for the private or commercial jumps from seven to 16.
Percent or actual?
The number, the actual number. And I just wanted the Select Board to go in bias fully open with that decision that if we have potentially 16 potential opt-outs under that new criteria, that the that would essentially double, more than double our opt-out potential, which is approximately half of residential properties in the village. The wastewater committee has been working diligently at grant funding, we secured $5 million in grants to make sure the project construction, survey, design, permitting, and hookup to each home, including the septic system would be paid for by that grant, which we have succeeded in. We secured three votes to make sure that we have public buy-in on the project. And all along, we've been saying that we want this to be affordable for the people living in those that are hooked up. If the 16 potential opt-out properties actually do opt out, that could easily double the monthly expense for the folks remaining on the system. And we have been saying all along at public meetings, we want that number to be in the $25 to $40 per month, depending on this amount of bedrooms for private residencies. If we have that use of opt-out options, that those numbers could easily double. Or either that, or we have to pass it along to taxpayers. And or some combination, so I just want that to be noticed by the Select Board in that decision. And I think there's, might be some room for some compromise where we can maybe loosen number three's requirements, but still make sure that most people in the village are required to hook up. And I don't think we need to sniff that tonight, but I'm asking the Select Board to consider that. Because we do not want the folks that are in the village, both commercial, private, and municipal, to be burdened with that number potentially doubling, helping.
Yeah, the, the numbers, the numbers weren't available that night.
Right, right, that's why, yeah, that's, and that's awesome.
My, my feeling on the matter still remains that there isn't, there's, it's not a subjective right choice, there is an objectively right choice financially. No matter what your financial situation is, it's to take the free money and hook up now.
Right.
I just have reservations about dangling a carrot that is, is difficult to, to get to.
You mean the opt-out carrot?
Yes, yeah, this, this call, section A opt-out thing is a very difficult to obtain pathway when it has number three as written. My only reservation on the thing is making it feel like village members who don't want to make the objectively correct choice, forced to make the objectively correct choice. I just have a hard time telling people what they need to do with their own property. That was my only objection to that whole thing. If there's a way that either tonight or in some other meeting, we can try and build this in here in a way that works best and keeps costs low, right? Because I also don't want the other taxpayers in this town to have to flip the bill for people opting out. I agree, there must be some compromises there somewhere.
And then also, if, if, say, the worst case 16 opt-out, those numbers increase. And if any of those opt-outs successfully completely opt out as, you know, revised opt-out criteria, and their systems fail, and they later have to hook up, they would be burdened with a hookup fee, having to pay for a design, the construction, and a D E C wastewater permit, which we've estimated somewhere in the $10,000 to $20,000 range. And then more, more.
Yeah.
And Peter could give a more, put a sharper point on this. But I just wanted to know what, what that vote meant as far as the hookup numbers and the monthly costing associated with it.
I really appreciate that, that's why.
I think the total cost is gonna be closer to the $20,000 number. The tanks are well over $10,000, you then have permitting, you still have lines and plumbing and electrical. So.
The other comments, public comments? Here and now, we'll move on to correspondence. I'll pass this around, receive the Sheriff Department's December monthly report. Also, we see the Memorial County final budget assessment, and I assume that goes into the town report, okay?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to Stone Environmental on 30% design and wastewater plans. Peter Lozortek's here, Seth Jensen's here with us today. Before we do begin, Peter did have a request today of the Select Board to approve line for the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, is that what it is? Peter?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, it's, it's what's called the priority funding list, and, and the Select Board has authorized us to submit on behalf of the town for the last two or three years, and essentially, it's kind of leaving us on the list of towns that are in need of funding for these types of water and wastewater projects. I don't think there are really any notable significant changes to the application from last year. And we're just really looking, there, there is a an item on the form that pretty much says, you know, the, the Select Board, you know, is in support of this application going to the Vermont D E C. So that's what we're looking for.
I have just one thing, just because this, this gets confusing because it's called the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. It is also the list that is used by in our determined allocating things like pollution control grants. So submitting this application ensures your remain on the list if pollution control grants become available, or if other towns, you know, that for gun use of arms stop hooking, this will ensure you're in line for additional, for funds getting reallocated in, in grant funds as well. That's why it's important to keep your place in line that the project is for.
Right, thanks, Seth.
So this is the third year in a row that we, there, we find to be on, continue to be on this list, so it's not something new. But we are asking for the Board's approval to reply for this.
All seconds.
Do we have any other further questions on this?
There's no match or anything for funding on this.
No, and it's, isn't even really guaranteed funding, it's just putting us on the list for possible funding if we need it, but we're not applying for at this point. Okay, all those in favor? I propose, so carry. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, am I up to present the 30% plans then? All right, I'll share my screen, hopefully. Post-disabled participant screen sharing, can you, somebody over there, change that?
Is he good now?
Okay, how'd that work? Can you see the plans on your screen yet?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so this is just an opportunity to kind of give an update of where we are in the process. We have recently submitted our 30% design plans to Vermont D E C. And Emily Hackett, who's on the call, actually just today, offered up her comments for us to kind of work through and address both kind of wrap up the 30% stage and also moving forward towards the 60% design plans. So I'll just kind of quickly walk you through what's in the design plans. You're welcome to reach out to me whenever with questions, either during this presentation or in the future. And then just keep in mind that this, this is still kind of a work in progress that's evolving, and, you know, there's still a fair amount of steps to be completed and, and pieces to the puzzle. So this is kind of our overview sheet with a table of contents. Next, is kind of general design notes about construction. We, we also, as part of the package, have a table of contents for the specification book, which will end up being a, you know, rather lengthy kind of guidebook of the specifications for construction that we'll be developing over the next couple of months. As you move through the plan set, sheet three kind of shows you an overview of the service area and the page layout for the subsequent sheets that are the existing conditions site plan. We've surveyed most of the projects, there are a few areas that we're still need to fill in, and we'll be back in the spring to kind of wrap those pieces up. As you pan along, this is kind of the western edge of Route 15. This is kind of an area that we need to develop and get more survey as it, as we move forward. There were several landowners who weren't really interested in in working with us in terms of that, so we're kind of waiting to see how that plays out and do additional survey down here through the right of way at a minimum. You can see on this plan, we did complete in the fall ledge probes or bedrock probes to try to figure out where bedrock is throughout the service area and where we're proposing the force main to go. Each of these symbols throughout these existing conditions plans show where we, where we advanced one of those ledge probes. As we move down through town, a couple notable things on this sheet are some areas of contamination from historic petroleum releases that are on file with the state. Those are areas that we want to kind of pay attention to as we build the project and may end up having, you know, soil that needs to be managed appropriately. So that kind of falls into the box of things we still need to be working on. Likely development of a soil management plan. Here, we're kind of moving through town, here is the existing bridge on School Street. And the eastern leg of Route 15's service area. Go on down towards the ball fields over to the town forest area. You'll note through here, there are some wetlands around kind of the access in the proposed force main on the town forest, and those are things that will need to be dealt with from an environmental perspective. And then lastly, here's an existing conditions plan for the school and the disposal field area. Kind of next up is another overview sheet that shows the plan breakout for each of the proposed site plans that kind of get into the, the meat of the proposed project. You can see we, because there's a lot more detail, we have more sheets as we go through town. And start kind of panning through those. This kind of shows you where each of the properties where, where we're proposing the septic tank effluent pumping tanks for each of the properties. These, these still need to be discussed and kind of negotiated with landowners, but we're kind of doing our best to pick locations that make the most sense to us. You can see the location of the, the, the force main through town. And the connections to that force main. I will note, I didn't show this on the other, there is a profile of the force main on each sheet, kind of by station along the project. And we also mapped out what we found from those ledge probes and, and kind of tried to figure out our best estimate of where we think bedrock is and where we may need to be removing bedrock for the installation of force main. So, once again, kind of panning through town. We also threw, you know, on the sheets show where there's stream and river crossings. This, this first one, we are proposing, just kind of based on the bridge and the bedrock in the area. At this point, we're proposing that the force main crosses on the bridge. Several of the other ones, we will directionally bore underneath the stream and avoid needing to have that exposed. So we're panning through, here's the proposed new School Street Bridge, which will have the force main attached to it. As some of you may know, we've been working with V-Trans, that project is currently out to bid. And sort of the, the force main components of that section will be included in, in the contract for the bridge to, to kind of create efficiencies and not have too many contractors working in that area. Kind of pan through town, this is going down School Street. This is the town garage here. There's, there is a stream, small stream crossing here underneath the culvert. Ball fields. This is lost my bearings, this must be Flatiron Road. And then, once again, here's the tanks in the, in the clearing heading up towards heading up towards the town forest. And as many of you probably know, we're proposing that the force main kind of follows the existing logging road up through town, or up through the town forest. There will be some wetland buffer impacts as a result, that we'll have to apply for a wetlands permit with the state. And then will, the force main will go up kind of this last steep pitch to an area shown on this overall school plan. Kind of off on the edge of the clearing will be a small 12 by 12 control, control shed where we'll have pumps and various controls. There will also be final dosing pump station. And then this is the ball field where you can see the six proposed drip dispersal zones and the various manifolds that will dose those. and the various manifolds that will dose those. I think I mentioned this in the committee meeting, but you know, one of the things we like about this layout is that there are six zones. So it's, you know, very easy to isolate and shut off various zones as needed to service them or if there were a problem. So that was something as we work with Oakson and Perkright that we were, you know, very adamant that we wanted. And then the last couple of sheets are some of the spurs that we weren't able to capture as we went down the main force main route. This one is, I believe the, the east side of Route 15, heading back towards the School Street Bridge. And then lastly, this is a connection off of Flatiron Road to one residence up there. So that's, that's where we are right now. As we move forward, as I mentioned, we'll be working through specifications, additional details, fine tuning a lot of this, shifting things around. We're beginning to work on, with a consulting archaeologist to get clearance for the project on that and work on a ARA, an archaeological resource assessment report. And that will kind of determine if there's any other areas that we need to be looking at. We're working on other environmental issues like rare threatened endangered species and birds and bats and, and the wetlands. And we're pulling together what's called the environmental interest document, which kind of pulls all of that together and, and works on getting clearance for those issues. So that's kind of the gist of it. I'll open it up to any questions anyone might have and feel free, if you think of any later, to reach out to me.
There's still this plan. Is there something that you could email to Michelle and maybe pass out to the board? It's really hard to see.
Yeah, of course. Yes, I think, I think at this point, it's probably appropriate. We can even post it on the, the wastewater website if that's helpful.
Yeah. Many questions? I'm hearing it, Peter.
Question I have. They'll be drilling under the East Elmore stream and the one that comes out of Wookat Town. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Yes. Yeah.
And how deep will you have to go?
Well, that, that's actually one thing we'll be working with the stream alteration engineers to make sure we get to a depth that they're comfortable with. It is shown on the profile sheets what we're proposing right now. Typically you want to be, you know, five feet or so below the stream bed. Yeah, here's, here's one. Kind of see this, this is from this mark to this mark is a 10, 10 foot block. So, you know, roughly four or five feet below.
Bruce Wheeler, I had a question.
Hi Bruce.
Are we still planning on having a path, a pedestrian or a bicycle path along the route of the effluent and the piping?
No, that is not part of our project. We're generally trying to keep the force main out of the V-Trans roadway at their request as much as possible. So in most cases, it'll be just off the roadway, kind of in grassy lawn areas that are part of the 50 foot roadway right of way. I shouldn't say only 50, but whatever the, the state right of way is.
Well, would it be a good place for a bike path?
I'll leave that up to somebody else. Definitely not part of this purview. I, I think it would not, it, it would, it would probably be better for us to know ahead of time if that were something that was going to happen, just to make sure we were sleeving or insulated things that might be, say, plowed or snow, snow blown throughout the winter, just to make sure that.
We've talked, Peter, we've talked about it for six months, maybe a year. And no, I'm sure it hasn't gotten to any official decision, but I think it makes sense to look at that alternative. It's going to cost a lot to put a bike path up to the school, up to the town forest. It just seems like.
Sorry, I think I misunderstood. We're talking about on the town forest property. When you said bike path, I was envisioning something through the town, but we, yes, we are working with Sinuosity, which is the company, I believe, that is working to develop some trails heading up to the school. And yes, that is not a problem for our project. And, and we're kind of working to make sure, you know, things like the parking lot and/or any of the trails are can coexist. And I, I don't see any real problems with that.
Would that also include up East Elmore Road? Instead of on the road, actually near the pipe?
I think it probably could. I don't, I guess I don't have the details of what's going to happen in there, but I'm happy to look at it with whoever's working on that.
Yeah, it, it seems like getting a real advantage to getting that path in. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Peter, a quick question. Can you just convey to the select board the approximate timeline on the next phase of the design, 60% and then the 90, 100%, like your rough timeline on that?
We are in a pretty serious time crunch in terms of meeting the ARPA funding deadlines. So we're already working on kind of advancing towards the 60% level. And ultimately, you know, applications need to be starting to all go in and, and final plans. You know, May slash June of this year. So I, I, I don't have the timeframe we developed right in front of me, but you know, roughly we're trying to get, you know, 60% pretty far along this month and then, you know, 90, you know, probably by the end of March and then kind of working on all the other pieces, you know, in April and May also. So.
And just for the select board benefit that we are working, our next step is to work on landowner easements for the system.
Yeah, that's, that's a critical and important piece of this all is to start working with landowners to develop those easements and have those ready to go. Ultimately, I should also say, we're hoping to have the project out to bid at the end of August this year. So or, or at least have the package, you know, ready to be out to bid.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing that with us.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Can you hear me? This is Keith Cochrane. One quick question. I never got it answered when this went out for, you know, for a vote. Have all of the wellheads and everything around the school been identified? And basically considered safe from this?
Thank you. That's, that's a really good question. Um, they have been identified and we are currently working with Jeff Hofer, who's an independent hydrogeologist who specializes in water supplies. And he's kind of looking at it from a bunch of different angles in terms of kind of the, looking at the bedrock and, and the aquifers and testing. And he's going to be developing a report that will be, you know, available to, to, you know, show that we're providing adequate protection to those wells.
Okay. And the other quick comment that I have is I, I listened the other night when you were talking about the, the bylaws or whatever. Has there been any thought of some of your reserved allocation being set aside for the school in case they had a failure?
Yes and no. There hasn't been any recent discussions. For a while, our, our reserve capacity was pretty limited and, and would have, the school would have chewed up a bunch of it. There was a bit of a change in the way DEC's policy for these drip dispersals went, which gained us some capacity in addition to some additional testing we did where soils were more favorable and allowed us to load those drip dispersal areas greater than we thought we were going to be able to. So moral of the story is we have more capacity than we originally thought. And I think it would be more reasonable than before to potentially have some of that backup, you know, some of that capacity used for the backup for the school if needed. I will say though, that the school system is, the current system is way overdesigned in terms of like how much it can handle versus its actual use. So, you know, my sense is that, you know, that you, you never know what's going to happen, but my sense is that especially knowing that the school gets, gets its summer breaks where that leach field gets to rest. My sense is it's probably not at a great risk of failure.
Okay. That's all I have for now, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Peter. We're gonna, we're late for our next discussion. So we're gonna move on.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Bye.
So we have with us today Nicole Grattan and Akiza Havland. They're working with us as farmers in the Wookat Community Trust. So I've invited the Historical Society members, the library trustees and the select board for our discussion on a new concept that was put forth to us by maybe changing where we have the cafe at the library present building and moving the library over to the historic schoolhouse along with the Historical Society. And it has some pros in doing that. As you may or may not know, the library is running out of space. They don't have a lot of room for programming and libraries today are just about books. It's a lot about programming, having computers and so forth. And you can really not get more than five or six people in the library at a time. So you can't hold courses or programs or set up stations for computers. So it seemed like a a good move. I'm sure there's cons against moving it there, but I think we just needed to come together for discussions. It's, we have a grant that's coming up. And Nicole's going to explain a little bit more about that grant to help with the library move. So I'll, I'll let her.
Hi, everyone. Nicole Grattan. I'm with Preservation Trust of Vermont, and I have my colleague Kaziah Havland here as well. So I want to preface that this idea came from you guys. We came to the site, I think in December with Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. And Tom was there and he's like, have you ever thought of like flipping this on its head? So I just want to let you know that we are here to support you in whatever decision you make. But this is something that has come up. That just kind of took us a moment to like think, we need to kind of think about it a little bit more. So in terms of funding, the Vermont, the Village Trust Initiative that you guys have a partnership with PTV on, the funding is there to help you in whichever project or both projects. But in thinking about flipping the library over to the schoolhouse, we have some additional funding sources that could come into play that would be very helpful for helping with the restoration of that building. And a big one is a 2023 congressionally directed spending award that the Department of Libraries has. So they had other funding that they put out some big grants last year with, and this is $10 million that they're looking to spread throughout the state to support libraries. I can drop in the chat their little flyer. But basically it's intended to support libraries with everything from ADA compliance, HVAC, building envelope, which is roof, foundation, walls and windows. And as you guys know, the schoolhouse kind of needs all of those things. So I guess my point in sharing about the Department of Libraries grant is that there is additional funding that can come into play for the whole project, including what we would need to do at the depot building to kind of make that a cafe space rather than be a library. But I am going to drop this into the chat for you. I mean, I can talk about other funding sources that we think will come into play, but the big one would be this library's funding. I did talk with Tom McMurdo, who is heading up the library's funding, I'm going to call it library's funding. And he plans on having it roll out this year. And because this is a congressionally directed spending award, I'm pretty familiar with how that's going to funnel and flow. So you will have adequate time to build out a potential project to then draw down funds if you are a recipient. And then I feel like the last really important piece is just like the size of an award. So when I spoke with Tom, he let me know that the previous grant round that they had was about 16 million. This is 10 million. But awards in that 15, 16 million bracket, the first time, some of them were 1.5 million. So I think for a project of your scale and size, an ask of 250 to 500 would be a really appropriate ask, given what we know about the building. And as you shared, Linda, just knowing that right now your library capacity can only do so much because of its physical size. And the partnership that you can create with the Historical Society could really augment some of the offerings that you have where you could have genealogy classes. You could have large, larger meeting spaces for workshops and classes to be happening within the library space. So I'm here to answer as many questions as I can about DOL funding. But it's just another wing that we can kind of pull into this project. If the community trust and the town and the community at large is feeling this, that this might be the right shift to make on your campus. Um, on your campus.
Evening.
Thank you. I don't know, um, who this is directed to. Um. So I, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea. My concern as a library trustee. Is, um. We really don't have a lot of people that come to. Things right now that we do offer. Um, I know it's a great opportunity to. Offer it, but. I don't know if. The money and the money's not guaranteed. Um, you know, obviously we have to. Apply, but it's not guaranteed. So. Um, and there's much more like I'm sure the flooring and, um, obviously we know the. Um, water system, um, and that's all going to take time. Um. I, I just. I maybe we're just at the start of thinking about this, but I just feel like. Maybe we need. Um. A lot more thought on it, obviously. Um. And, and I'm curious who's, who's going to run the cafe? Is this a? Um, hey, somebody want to run this cafe and, and do this, or I, I just have a lot of questions. That's all.
Okay. But so this is, uh, beginning discussion. If, if the community and the select board say, no, we're not interested, we will know which pathway to go. But we just want to. Bring this out for discussion to, to kind of feel how you felt about it. Uh, we don't, we don't have, uh. We haven't really gotten into the weeds. We didn't want to put a lot of energy into this if you, if no one liked the idea at all. Um. What was your other questions? Um.
Cafe.
And it will take a long time, although leasing, so either place that we end up having a cafe. Um. It will be leased out to someone to come in and run it. The town is not going to run it.
Okay.
Presently, presently, uh, the select board has agreed. Um. To allow this. Uh, Woke Village Trust to. Restore the schoolhouse and. Lease it from the town. So we, the trust would be in charge of. Maintenance and what went on in there, and then the trust would. Lease it to someone who wanted to use that space. Um. And so it was built on the model like, uh, the Elmore Store has. The Albany Store, um, Peachum. But we have not really got into, um. A lot of details on this. I do think that, uh, the library could have. More people come to their programming, um, but there just isn't kind of the space to do that. Um.
Thank you.
More, more questions, Amy? Or questions you'd like us to investigate that we might not have the answers for tonight?
I, I just, my biggest concern is, um. I mean, we are in the state of where we are right now with a lot of things being shut, frozen down or whatever. That's now. Um. I just. Growing up in Woke, like. All my life. Um. I understand what we're trying to do. But I'm not sure. And I don't want to be a downer on this, but like Woke is, Woke and Woke will probably always be a sleeper town. But I understand what we're trying to do. I just don't know if it's. Yeah, I mean feasible is, is it, are people really going to stop off the rail trail at this cafe? Um, you know, maybe I'm way off. I don't know. I just feel like. It's. I know we gotta try, but I don't know at what cost, so.
Hello? Yeah. Hi, Amy. Sally here. Um, I just wanted to kind of disagree with one of the things. I think we have more foot traffic than, than you're kind of aware of, because I do my statistics every day. And, um, I was kind of feeling, you know, like my main thought was, oh my God, I can't move this library again. And then I came to the informational meeting that we had last weekend. And I was very impressed. Um, and the thing is, there would be a more open space, Amy, and I, I am of just kind of opposite. Of mind, and I don't live in Woke anymore, um, but having been the librarian for years, um. I do think it's kind of like, uh, feel the dream, build it and they will come. And so I really think that, um. You know, with, if there's, um, grant money coming from the Department of Libraries and if there's. Um, a way that we can expand or double our space, um. I just think it's something that we really need to look at and, you know, as a group, we can talk about it, but. I haven't really gotten any feedback from any of the trustees. I mean, I know Charmaine's here with me tonight and Dawn Cochran actually did call me today from Florida. And she wanted to know my feelings and I said, you know. Um, after, I was skeptical, but after having come to the meeting last week and Charmaine was here as well. Um, I think it could be a very exciting, um, transition. So, love you.
So, but also doesn't mean open more hours and being able to cover. Another person. Um, because the town would have to. Obviously agree on the budget for the library to have another person in there if we felt like. You know, because I, we know, you know, you're. Semi-retired, whatever, and you can only work so many hours. So are we offering more hours? Or is it just going to be the same? It's just a lot of things I'm thinking about, Sally. You know best.
Yeah, that is.
I mean, you know best because you were, you're working in there and you know. So, but these are just questions I'm trying to think of.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, that's a, that's a good question. Absolutely very valid question. And. We haven't even like kicked the can down the road as far as discussing that, you know, that's something that our next meeting, you know, we can. Hopefully, a, as a group, talk more about this. I can show you the, the layout. Um, I'm sure the select board would let us follow the layout. Uh, of what it would look like, perhaps if something were to transpire between. The, the library and the switching over, but. I want to thank you as a trustee for asking some really great, great questions.
Sorry, I'm always way ahead of the cart and I need to slow down, but.
No, you don't. Thanks for your feedback, Amy.
How many more things could you guys do if you had the space to do it?
Oh, man, we could do, we could do, um, like seminars. We could do, um. Like genealogy. I love that. We've had a lot of people ask me for genealogy programs. We could do, um. Teaching, we've had people ask me, could we teach? You know, like just. What's a fundamental computer skills? You know, a lot of people don't know, you know, how to do email. A lot of people don't. You know, know how to, um. How to Zoom, you know, there's just, um, so many, you know.
Author, author readings.
Author readings, yeah, informational programs that we could, you know. Provide, and if there wasn't. From what I'm hearing, and I'm not sure, you ladies can let me know, if there's grant opportunities from the Department of Libraries. Um, to, you know, help facilitate this, then. To me, that's kind of a gift. Um, and I, you know, I could actually, if you wanted, I could send something to the select board of all of the programs. That I think would be very well attended that we could offer. For the community. Um.
I think, I think we only have to look towards Crasberry or Morsel with a bigger library.
Absolutely.
Space and.
Yes.
Different programs to take out what we could offer.
And our library split up. And so where the library is situated, the shelving has gone, has to go right down the middle of the library because there's so many windows. That we couldn't attach it to the wall, so that takes up a lot of space. And then there's the kids section upstairs, which is, is quite tight. So when we get, um. Like, like say when we did our gingerbread houses, we had like 25 people and then we were. We were like sardines. It was, yes. So, I just think. I just. I'm excited about the idea of, Charmaine, do you have anything you want to say?
I just think that we can offer more, um, like family nights or movie nights or something that would engage. Families to get out with their families and, um, have opportunities to. Adults talk to each other and hits. Socialize together, um, something for teens to do in this, in this town. There's nothing for teens to do here. In the town for right now. Um, I just think that there, uh, with a bigger space, we could. We could do so much more.
And we kind of stick, I'm, I'm sorry, we kind of stick to our same programs every year, like our same seven or eight, because we know. That we can provide that capacity and, I mean, I use air quotes, um, but we could provide much more. We have a larger space.
Yeah, can I just add that, um, from the, from the cafe perspective? I think having a cafe where the current library is. Adjacent to the rail trails. Brings a lure for people using the rail trail. We just got a statistic from Memorial Regional Planning Commission that the, uh. The hardware to Woke section of the rail trail is the most heavily used. And we, that, if we just have a sign on rail trail that says cafe. Right here, five hundred feet this way, whatever, 200 feet, whatever.
And you can see it once they do the work for the people that they're doing. You can actually see the whole area. You can see it right off the rail trail.
Right, so I think that'd be a very convenient spot for a cafe.
And I don't have a better. Yeah, we get plenty of people on, on Saturday, just on the four hours that I'm there on Saturday, just, you know. Using the library. Um. The bathrooms.
It's a beautiful space at the schoolhouse for the library. The high ceilings.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember Mary don't smice classroom, classroom and Susan died. A great first.
That is like really yummy nutty toasty flavor and that coconut oil, right? That is bringing it up younger.
Do we have someone online who has a comment, Tom?
Yeah, I do. I wanted to speak about the rail trail issue because there are a lot of people that come here. And they would love to go into that cafe, get something to eat, drink, and especially use a bathroom.
About the select board, any thoughts, your initial thoughts on it?
It seems like a no brainer to me, and I can't imagine from a budgetary standpoint, the holding costs. That we carry over in the library in that building would be substantially different from this building. And. As everyone just said, look at the foot draper. Just in this picture. Plus out of the cafe, you could step out into the park. It, it just, it makes it a great deal more sense to me. The only negative I have is that. Blame, yeah. I'm just really ashamed that it never earned me.
It opens up a lot more funding to get, which makes it easy.
Yeah.
So remember, there's, all libraries have their own area of funding normally anyways they have access to. They can use compared to other stuff.
Yeah.
I just had one question regarding the grant. Um. Would. Who would be involved in writing that grant? You, I don't.
Yes, you're right. So all the technical assistance that comes with the Village Trust Initiative, we're here in whatever you decide. So if you guys were to decide to make this flip kind of happen. Um, we will connect you with either a grant writer or support you inside, possibly call on LCPC if they have additional capacity they can offer. I see Tori on the call. Um, we are here to help and guide you in whichever way you need that help. So with the Department of Libraries grant, yes, we can help you put it together and put in your best application.
Thank you.
Anyone from the Historical Society that have a comment tonight?
Oh, this is Bruce Wheeler. Just to comment that this all sounds wonderful. Uh, love the idea of the library. Taking a, a bigger space. Sally and all of you do a wonderful job with the library and, uh. It's, it's just a, a, a good proposition from my point of view.
Hi, this is Pat Thompson. I would. Kind of echo what Bruce says. Um. Uh, it seems like, um, a better space of the library would be good and. That the library. Space would make a better location for your cafe. Uh. I mean, it's going to take a lot of coordination. Um. I've, I've been around and done a little grant writing in my day and. I'm, I'm not volunteering, believe me, because I'm beyond that age. Um, but if you feel like you have the personnel to really do that, um. And, and put it all together, I think it. Sounds like a good proposition. Schoolhouse is going to take a tad bit of work. We've, we've done a lot of restoration in, at the United Methodist Church and, uh. It, uh. It's a lot of work. Uh, and schoolhouse was in. I would say worse shape than the church when we started, but it's not impossible, obviously, and. You know. If you all think you can pull it all together, I think it sounds good to me.
Well, Pat, Bruce has to add that the Methodist Church is, is just a superb building now. And will have many uses, I'm sure, over the next few years.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing all that.
Well, we hope, we hope it can become a place where people can meet and. It can be a space available in a different part of town.
Sure.
Um, but, uh, that, that's part, that was part of our goal, obviously.
You know, before, before Nicole and Kaziah became involved in this. I had, had the same question that Pat mentioned, like, did we have enough? Energy to do this? Did we have enough? Support? I have no doubt in my mind. That these powerhouses will take this to a state of completion.
We have a tagline at Preservation Trust that we are a project's first and longest friend. So pretty much we, we are with you for, for the whole ride. So. Anything you need, just let us know.
Thank you for bringing us here. Okay. Come on out. So I think this was a good decision, uh, discussion tonight. Um. We will be meeting shortly with the Community Trust and we can talk about this. Do you have any other questions of us? Thank you very much, everyone, for coming and thank you for putting your voice in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, project managers report.
I'm here. Um. So. The FEMA project is at its. Yet again. Um, FEMA, uh. Was thrown into a bit of a, a tizzy. Uh, this week with, uh. President Musk's musings. Um, to, um. Uh, restrict and to pause funding. Um, so the folks at FEMA were confused and it really slowed down a lot of the, the project activity. Um, we did get a copy of the court order though today. I don't know if the town received it. But this is simply a copy of the temporary restraining order. Um, so to give funding does move forward. Um, at least on a temporary basis. So the, the motivation is very, very high, uh, to get our final projects through. Um, the hall project, uh, did get to obligation, um, over the past week. And, uh, that, uh, leaves us a remaining project of Frazier Road. Um, Frazier Road. Oh. Uh, had been the subject of an RFI from the review group at FEMA. Um, they had 18 questions. Uh. I had answered, um, all of those questions except for a cost, um, analysis that. Um, was going to be done by Parker. Um, the eighteen questions involved such items as uh how much gravel we used on a particular pothole? Um, because we reported X amount of gravel and the um FEMA calculator said we should have used more than that. Um, so we, same, same with soil. Um, so we did have to go back and forth a little bit and um indicate that we do move soil, you know, these are dirt roads and we can move soil from uh from the ditching efforts. Um, so I think we've answered their questions at this point, but it has not yet moved to obligation. Um, so at this point, um Frazier Road is scheduled to be um eighty thousand. Uh, Town Hall came in at thirty nine thousand. Um, so we have a hundred and twenty thousand um additional funds towards our two million dollars um that we are are waiting, or at least we're just waiting on the seven to nine thousand portion. Uh, the Town Hill Culvert also had a modification, which was uh to add the utility cost for the poles that were moved there. Um, that has been completed. It's still impending, um but we did get a note from FEMA that it has been completed. Um, and I noticed we also received uh checks today um totaling four hundred and fourteen thousand. I'm not sure those, when when we receive funding or or actual uh money, um it comes from the state. So FEMA does the obligation, FEMA pays the state, the state pays Bolkut. Um, and uh is Linda there? I don't.
So I have to sign a requisition first, and I agree with it. And um printout, one was for Flatiron Road and one was for Town Hill. Um, they're pending. Uh, and so both of those projects, we are going to have to submit all our costs because we might have to pay them back. Um, we didn't spend all that money, we don't get to keep it. I had to sign a paper stating that, so that's why I've been asking you for all the invoices for Town Hill, and I'm gonna have to ask you for Flatiron.
Right, right. So I am, I actually am made a a request from uh town uh town office uh for a copy of the actual paid invoices. Um, just to make sure that I have those correct, uh because FEMA did do a portion of both of those projects based on bids uh rather than the actual paid invoice. Um, so I'm hoping to get that soon and, you know, have a uh an analysis put together for you, um, you know, tomorrow or Monday. And um, let's see, I think that's about all I have. I mean, after we get the um Frazier Road completed, uh the last piece will be the CAT Z, which is the administrative cost. And uh we're, we've calculated those in to be about uh thirty thousand. Um, and I don't anticipate any problems there. So we're still on target for two. But uh it is moving at the pace that it has moved. I think we're in month nine. I'll probably be visiting with you a couple more times.
Thank you, Kirk.
Take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, to the administrative assistant report. Um, so I took a look at the the school street last, in the last meeting or one of the last meetings, there was this discussion about the School Street Bridge, when we were talking about um what we uh wanted to submit to. I think it was the LCT, um you know, whatever it caught concern us for the year. Um, and the select board brought up the School Street Bridge went up near Overbys and across from the garage um being in in bad shape. Um, when I brought it up with Michelle Redman, she said that she honestly thought, based on the uh the inspection that was made in August twenty three, she thought that it doesn't seem to be in in disrepair, um except for the guardrails. And Dylan agrees uh with the guardrails are too short and they're rusted. But so I just needed to hear more from the select board about the condition of that bridge. Your your con, your board, um what we were talking about?
We were with uh Elmore Brown at the bridge. So we did have, did have an inspection done in August twenty three after the flood. They said it was in good condition.
Except for the guardrails. They did not um recommend anything except guardrail replacement, which we had on our list. This year. So I just needed specifics before I pursued that. It's not a problem. I think, I mean, it wasn't inspected after the twenty twenty four flood, but I could get them out there to to inspect it again if you wish, but.
No, the only thing I was bringing up is as soon as you start getting people going to the town forest, the traffic flow that bridge is narrow. So in the future, I think we should get to increase the size with.
And I have a question. So um so I used to work for the Department of Natural Conservation. So the condition is inspection is structural condition. Uh, did they do a bank tool analysis of what Kurt was talking about, the span?
No, they only the condition of the bridge.
Because it could be significantly undersized, which would make it more vulnerable for flooding. Blood damage, um Town Cabinet has just hired way shift to replace two village uh bridges that were significantly undersized and identified as that prob- problems for.
I have a guess, the other one's going to Elm Street, probably. The other one's probably that crazy bridge on that route breaks through town that always blocks a place.
Yep. So they identified these two bridges, the replacement in Cabin Village that were essentially responsible for all the flooding in Cabin Village, and now they're upsizing those bridges based on the width. So it's not just the structural integrity, but I think the the width of the structure, stuff like that. And that's something a stream operation engineer from DEC could could do for the town.
So DEC's stream alteration engineer? Do you have the base of that?
No, no.
Is that different than a hydraulic study?
Yeah, you could do a hydraulic study as well with with V-trains. They usually do a hydraulic study and a bank rule analysis. I mean, both sides.
Chatter Cross, no, but those.
Besides that bridge.
He is doing the hydraulic studies.
Oh, okay. We want to call it. The embankments basically are a ledge. So there shouldn't be a problem there, but I, my concern is the width, once you get this town forest up and going.
Oh, you're talking about?
Not the width, not the length, the width of it, because right now you meet a town truck, you have to stop. It's just not wide enough.
And success groups identified flood resilient projects with Memorial Regional Planning Commission. As well, it's a little bit of a problem.
I mean, when we do get a flood, there's almost water over it. I've seen three, three, four feet over.
Yeah. I just did work a little.
A good hydraulic study, then maybe once you have that, we could start looking at scope of work to maybe get a grant to house and need it, maybe.
I'll then request hydraulic study for that. Um, we uh Bradley and I were able to get the the town report off to the printer. Um, we had one change, but it should be fine. We we had it there at the deadline. Um, Belinda Bradley and I were have been setting up text my gov. So it's now on the website, we're collecting opt-ins, um and we're working with getting the training that we need. We hope to launch it on February twenty fifth, um with Linda wants to send out the, I think, dog license information. Uh, and then at some meeting, they should be collecting more information if people want to sign up. And we can collect their phone number or show them how to opt-in. Um, I finally completed the materials and contractor worksheets for FEMA twenty twenty four. Um, I gave those to Parker. I've been meeting with Parker, PGM. I believe it's PDM. Yeah, I agree, PMG, program manager, whatever. Um, and and uh he filed our impact statements. I had given those to him a long time ago. He filed them on time, but they're still not complete. As far as, he gave them numbers, but they're not detailed, and so I cannot sign off on the um the actual.
The image inventory.
Yes, I see damage inventory. And so we get so it's going to be um last meeting that we had last Thursday, he said he had them done by this week, but he's been, as you can see, working with Kurt Klein on twenty twenty three. I don't know if that's going to happen. Um, the the only remaining data that I think we owe him would be the labor sheets, that the town, you know, the town hours, labor hours and our equipment, and I'm working on this, I should have them done next week, so then we'll. Um. And then the recall, we had all the town garage light fixtures. Um, we had put in new light fixtures sometime last year. Um, it was a recall on them, and that was the first thing I did in August, and fun, we had them, had a guy come out uh on Monday, so those have been done. That's pretty much what I have.
Any questions, Michelle? No, thank you. All right, select boards reviewing everything, but I was gonna read our uh what the trust of the public was asking, um, they're asking just for the select board to agree to um write a letter of support for a grant, an EPA grant, which Habitat for Humanity is applying for, for that acre and a half of land that um they should be getting out of the forest land on Route fifteen, which has um some brown hills in it, and they could find some. They have found some funding that will support uh the cleanup for that, so I just need uh it would secure uh funding hiring environmental contractors and remediate the site of this damage. We get a motion to just agree that we will write a letter of support. He will actually write the letter.
I'll make the motion to support that. I'll make, I'll second it.
You have any more questions, Jose? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Okay, thank you. Uh, formal approval to apply for the brick, when we talked about it informally at our uh wastewater ordinance meeting, I wasn't on the agenda, so I need to the board uh wanted to move forward with this because I had the deadline, I just need a motion to formally apply for a brick brand for replacement and upsizing the Culvert Bridge at Fourwell Drive.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
For the discussion? We're now all those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Okay. Town meeting organization and responsibilities. Melinda? Do you want to be part of this discussion?
Yes, please.
So we have um Joe coming into our next meeting to go over the two uh board articles, so he understands them. Um, the town meeting, what else are you going to need help for with the board?
Um, just the counting at town meeting and um basically coming back that night after seven o'clock, so we will know our officers and um we'll also know the school budget.
But do we need, do you need help, like, are we gonna have Girl Scouts give the pledge? Are we gonna have food?
Oh, yes. Girl Scouts are gonna be out in the lobby. Okay, so the Girl Scouts are gonna be out in the lobby, they've already agreed to it. Yes, they're going to bring in the flag, I'm gonna make sure I have one this time. And um, you know, present it and do the pledge of allegiance. Um, I don't know about any uh legislators speaking, that would be something you would talk to Joe about. I do know I have asked the fire department auxiliary to do the food, I have not heard back because Justice for Dogs does not want to do it. And I have not asked the Athletic Association because I'm waiting to hear back from the fire department.
Do you need me to um nudge?
Uh, yeah, I would nudge Jim if you can. I think it would be a great fundraiser for them. Maybe we could say the money is towards this hydrant or something.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm I'm going to contact the OSSU and make sure that we have heat for the night and that the lights stay on. Because last time it was not good.
Dylan, um, are you interested in letting people watch this again? Are you going skiing or?
No, I'm playing either.
Okay. Do you need anything from us or any? Are you gonna communicate with the school?
Yeah, I'll communicate with the school. I can't imagine much has changed. The only thing I might try to do is get in there because they had an upgraded audio system last year, but I didn't know that, and I think I might be able to tap into it.
Okay.
And that might make it a little bit better.
So Dolan will be there the day before because there won't be any school to set up, just so you know.
Yeah, uh that day is usually tricky for me, but um I might, so I might communicate with uh and just see if I can get in there uh at some point after school and just learn about their audio system. Everything else should pretty much stay the same.
I did tell them we don't need a stage, but um I did ask them for their microphone system and stuff, um and if we could use the kitchen at this point.
Great, thank you.
And so make sure that there's some table, I know that the um schoolhouse will like to do a display.
Yes, is wastewater wanting to do one too? Just to show maybe what you have on the board there?
Yeah, I think we can, we could do a, maybe do a table, but probably like we have in years past, if that is possible.
Yeah, just where maybe if people who haven't uh heard all, all the aspects of it um might want to just know a little more information.
If we can ask um Dylan right now, if they could do a follow-up of the design.
Okay, thank you.
Planning permission, need to do any surveys or anything, or they're all set?
Nothing that I'm aware of, but I will send out a feeling.
Go ahead. We sound like we're pretty good.
I think Seth has a question.
Yeah, I'm just LCPC is talking about potentially doing a regional plan survey um with some flood recovery questions, and we had a discussion about reaching out to Will Cook Johnson in Cambridge about town meetings, so it's possible you might want to uh get your permission to set up a table or something.
Okay, we're with Belinda, let her know, so she knows how many tables she needs.
Okay. You're bringing a dome. You're bringing a dome, that's true, for everybody, right?
Would you like us to bring domes?
Well, there'll be Girl Scouts.
Maybe a munchkin. You would be better.
Okay, reach out if you need any help or you need us to do anything.
Okay, I will.
Okay, approve the RFQ at the ready list of emergency road material.
We just have this list in front of you. Um, we have. Uh, quite a few, uh. Contractors submit their request for qualifications. Um, I really. Um, I had Lucia and Hope Lucia and Dylan go over these, uh, the companies that are on this list. Um, I will be ranking them based on pricing, um, and, and location, but, um. Not all of the contractors provided mobilization rates and, um. I think the ones that are a bit farther away provide those rates, but I do need to reach out. That will then factor into the cost, but. I'm just asking you to operate this list. So that we have this in our personnel, I mean, our purchasing policy and compliance and FEMA. And this list, uh, is the go-to for Dylan, who will have an emergency only. Um, and this list is effective from the emergency up to three days out. So that he can just reach out to these contractors without consulting the, with the select board. Um, so he can just get work done.
I'm curious of what the contractors thought.
I don't know. I have any comment? Of that, we're like, this is, you know, it's a great idea. Um, I did reach out to a couple that were not on the list that did help us last year. Um, but a couple did not, did not respond. I think they're just too small, but I wanted to make sure that they had seen this request. But a couple did not. I think they were, again, just too small. They don't really have invoice numbers or any issue. They invoice them just a one, one-person operation. But I didn't have any negative feedback. To me personally.
Everybody on the list will be able to provide us with the significant general liability.
I guess we can get up from them once we approve this list. And I do have their rates. So we have the rates. What I did in this particular spreadsheet is just go by, based on escalator. So that I could rank them based on pricing. More or less, um. Dylan will have all of this information. He can become very, much more familiar with it, help me write these before spring.
Do we need to approve this list?
I think we do for our purchasing policy and for FEMA, yes.
Shella, looking for a motion to approve the. Twenty five at the ready contractor R and P list. As provided.
I'll take that margin.
You have a second?
I'll second. Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, so carrying. Thank you. That looks like a lot of work. But I think it will be. I think it will be really good, you know, streamlined in when you're having an emergency and.
These are the things I think they need to.
Concern for potential spawning hill slope failure.
Put out the, um, the email. From, um. So I reached out, based on a couple of, uh. I reached out to Royce, Royce Woodcraft. Because we had thought that he had a concern about a culvert. And he said, no, really, I don't have a concern about a culvert on Woodcut Road. But I do have a concern of that. And you can read his concerns here that, um, the spalling hill and that area around there. Is just going to experience a significant slope failure. It's just kind of. He's just very concerned about it. He feels that possibly should start to redirect traffic, um, in rainstorm, things like that.
Did they give a copy of stuff? Um, I believe I sent a lot of the. State geologist report from the north. Six ninety-six.
So.
Um, well, that's why we're having to die out.
It's, oh, wow.
Yeah. And so on the, they'll pass it around. So coming up, this is weird. It's caving in. Going up and moving both the road, um. Yeah. I just worry, just sorry. So it says, um. I'll let you read it, but I'll just read. Our observations along the face of the July. Two thousand twenty-three failure starts. Identify the materials overlaying bedrock is medium to four standing gravel overlying. Playing a dense unit consisting of dirt, fine sand and silk. Supercomposition of these two materials. Sets up a significantly permeable to contrast. Come up with visit, the overlying materials were wet and water was clearly flowing along the contact between the two material. And then exiting out of the face of the slope. Bedrock was not served anywhere along the slope or at river level. I'll let you read it though, but it sounds like this has been going on for a long time. Um.
It sounded a little, the rest of the best.
No. Well, I've noticed for years that it's been. Sloping and I know that Don Poppy put a lot of material in there and made that little burn in that area too. Um. Never really knew. I thought it was just truck traffic. So we are, um. I suggested that Michelle, um, schedule an appointment with the state geologist in the spring to look at it and.
But that did landslide lock that river? You. Probably wash it all, the lower half of North.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
There's something coming to try hold that road up.
Well, we're, are trying to. Maybe try to figure out how to incorporate it in one of the hazard mitigation areas and stuff. And now with that river, if that goes, what are we going to do?
We're going Gulf Road.
Yeah.
What choice have you got?
Well, the other choice is, uh, at least, um. Getting heavy trucks traffic up that road. At least that section up to Gulf Road. But we'll need to wait and see what they have to say.
Yeah, I think that that is. Will be an uphill battle based on some of the residents. Yes, I'm sure they, they, they love it if every truck went up since that.
That's why we need to wait and see what the report says.
Yeah.
I mean, when they came and shut down School Street Bridge, you know.
Mm-hmm.
They come and they shut down the road. That's it.
Yeah, what are you going to do?
Updates, breath, wastewater ordinance update and preliminary notice. I think today we just got a notice from the, and I don't know, from the attorney that we're interviewing.
Yeah, give us just. And some definitions of what you have looking to go in. What, small things like that. There were two items that I think are worth, um. Spending a little time looking at, that I haven't had time to.
No, I haven't had a ton either.
Yes.
I was just going to table it because we hadn't, um, gotten anything back. But it came in late this afternoon and I haven't had time to look at what is coming in this. But it's nice having it on the agenda because then people have the opportunity of seeing that and. And knowing that it's coming.
We did, we did post the draft.
Would you like to take on some February notice?
When do you want the public hearing? I mean, I mean, what, uh? That will be on the nineteenth. Will that be in March or what? Does it matter?
Um, you know, ultimately. Ultimately, that's up to the board. I think that it would be from a timeline of the project and like what Peter mentioned, the, the kind of. You know, the goal of being up to been in August, um. If. Nineteenth could be sort of the last select board view and then the, you know. Noticing for hearing, assuming there aren't major issues or, you know, major items that come up. Um, you know, doing that in March, providing, you know, the hearing notices or, you know, publishing schedules and such. I think would be what we were marching.
So we have time to look and make sure that it will.
Can you, have a feeling or the files that would be?
Yeah, yes. And I, as a clarification point regarding ordinance to the board, um, so based on our, the conversation we had earlier. Does wastewater committee, uh, can we work, work out some sort of compromise language on, on that item that we discussed?
I was just going to ask if there were, if it was appropriate time. Is that a tonight thing? Since I would want to. Get this done by the nineteenth.
Just like the wastewater committee's going to meet, um. Next Monday for an outreach committee meeting and then we're going to meet again for a regularly scheduled meeting, um.
Eighteenth.
February eighteenth, yeah. So we have two meetings before the nineteenth. Select boards.
That's what I mean. If we would need to, the select board would need to agree on whether or not that language is included. Right? Am I, am I correct in that?
Sit for us.
Uh, in order for us to have it ready by the nineteenth, the select board would need to agree on whether or not that language is included. So it would have to be tonight that we would make that final decision.
No, not necessarily. You can do it on the nineteenth.
All right.
Um, you could present new language on the nineteenth.
Fantastic. All right. Okay, so we can, we should work.
Because on then. And then on the nineteenth, you present the new language, you decide whether you want it or not. That will be it. And then the public hearing will be the first.
Start the clock morning, it's the nineteenth, the morning clock.
Yeah, because I, I, with the new, with the new numbers, right, the numbers being available, I do see the importance of getting as many people on. As possible. And that's the entire goal of the thing. And that's why you guys have struggled for. As long as you have to try and make sure that everybody can get hooked up for free. And like I said earlier, it just, it just makes sense to do it now. I just have a fundamental problem with telling somebody what they have to do while they're on there. I'm saying, I'm excited to see how we may be able to. Come up with something that works.
So I'm understanding Jim, he would like to clarify the language for the wastewater ordinance, um, number seven, section seven three, three.
We, we opt out.
Not clarify, compromise. Compromise between removing it and putting something in. Can they find some language that, um. The board can agree on?
I was also going to say as well, I mean, I. This isn't important for the, for the minutes, but I am only one-fifth of the opinion. I am easily outgover here.
Right.
You know, if, if any of you guys have any passionate meanings, one or the other.
I think, I think from the wastewater perspective, um. Making it affordable to village residents that are hooked up is first and foremost importance, but also at, at the, the flip side of that coin. Is not to make it too, uh, financially or technically burdensome for, for someone that wants to opt out. So finding that. Uh, threading the needle there is what we'd like to achieve.
And now are you going to do that? Are you going to do it at nineteenth select board meeting? Are you going to?
I think we could have some.
Send some language, uh, ahead of time for board members to review and.
Um.
I mean, you, they can review and comment to you. They can't review and comment to each other. You know, they can't talk to each other, but they can talk to you.
Um, can, can we, because our, um. Our meetings, we have an agenda out for Mondays. It's more outreach focused. I don't know if we can, um. Resolve this at the meeting on Monday, this coming Monday, but we maybe start the discussion, but we're at that meeting on the eighteenth, we can. Uh, certainly have some language at the wastewater committee would prove to be reviewed by the select board if that's not too short notice. Um, if we can get it to for your nineteenth meeting. The next day, essentially.
I would just plan to be there on the nineteenth in case they don't like it.
I'm having surgery that day, so I'll be out, but, um. We might, we can get someone else to.
I have the utmost faith that whatever you present is going to be, is going to be the best compromise that we can come to.
And that J D Heinz, she was here, that special meeting, we can, that's her area of expertise. We can ask her to. Possible, I'm having, I have. Two or three compromise options forming in my head that I don't want to blurt out now, which I haven't vetted up with anyone but myself. Um, and I'm guessing a little bit, you know, but it's, it's, it's possible that. We might not have a meeting on Monday. Couple ideas that might be worth getting. Initial reaction, not as a board meeting, but as a, if you have initial reaction, do you prefer option A, B, or C, reply? You reply only to Jen, files, just so that it's where. Yes, we're coming up with ideas that go in the. Complete wrong directions. We don't spend too much time. You know, but if there seems to be like it is coming to a compromise, some sense of that, that's worth misusing the language. Yes, that makes for a sense, as long as it works with what you guys. And, yeah, one, one thought that it's sound loud. We just know that we have, we could maybe test, um, still environmental to coming up. Uh, maybe substituting for the engineers, at least opinion where they have to pay an engineer. They might, maybe we can work something out with, with them. In pre-construction, before the opt-out deadline.
You know, I actually, I like that a lot. If, if they had. Yeah, I like that a lot as a part of, as a part of the installing, deciding where their site pump station, should they choose to. You know, just have somebody take a look at the tank, the debox, whatever, and just say, you guys are kind of at risk here.
And there's other considerations such as, uh, depth to bedrock. Uh, proximity to the well with the existing system.
impacts on everybody, landowners.
Yeah, adjacent lots, lines, and these other things that have to be considered for, for more quality and safety reasons.
Yeah, I like, I like the direction that's headed in.
And we don't, we definitely do not want someone to successfully opt out, have their system fail and then have to pay twenty thousand dollars later, which is. I don't, I, I would hate to see someone do that, you know? Billis topically, what I'm hearing is the, the concern of not making someone do. Bill, historically, what I'm hearing is the, the concern of not making someone do something that people don't. And I'm kind of going to with Jim about abutting wells, abutting ground, all those kinds of considerations where your decisions are impacting somebody else. Might be crazy, you know, how is not, how the things we consider in terms of evaluating what options might make sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and as I've said a dozen times so far, there is an objectively correct action to take. It's take the free hookup. It's going to cost you 20 grand. Do it later. Just do it now. You know, that's, that's not subjective. That's not a opinion. That's just numbers. Don't act like it works.
That may be thrown there. Well, if it fails, you're there, you have to connect to it.
Yeah, which I think is in there, isn't it?
That's in there, yeah.
I, I don't believe it's true. That was why that, having the engineer replacement zone struck me was because you're obligated to hook up. Anyway.
And what time does this meeting until? Uh, it is. This meeting, I think it's a.
Do you want to call up?
When you're thirty, make sure.
Yes, you don't have to.
And then we have a regular city meeting on the eighteenth at five here.
Yeah, I'll probably be the one to come to the one on five o'clock on the eighteen.
Eighteen.
Also, Richard?
What's that?
Beyonce?
Yeah.
Ready or not?
I know. I don't want to step out again until April. Two degrees when I walk in here. I make a motion that we close our board meeting for February fifth, 2025 AD.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can stay with Jeff.
Yes.